I would have never, I guess, one, I would have never took your phone, but I wouldn't have the guts to show up for the fifty bucks. You know what I mean? Like, like here. Yeah, like you can, you can sign up all type of ways.
Oh, that's fun. All right. Thank you.
I would never take that deal. No way.
People walk by. Oh, yeah.
I could never do anything like that because I would have a compartment box and have a drone, a drone.
How is that?
Box away.
It's like thirty seconds fast or something, which is a lot better than being like three minutes off or whatever.
You would have nev- you would have never wanted it to work for you. You would have never done anything.
You can, if you want to.
You can, if you want to.
Ignore what I.
I'm sure they would love to.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is seven thirty. This is the regular council meeting for November twenty-fifth. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Protemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Here.
Councilor Roback.
Here.
Councilman Soltes. Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Grifson.
I am here. Thank you. The invocation and pledges evening will be led by Councilman Fleming. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Dear Lord, as we gather today, we thank you for this opportunity to collaborate and work as one. We ask you for your wisdom to guide us, to guide our thoughts and decisions, and for unity to prevail in every discussion. May our efforts be harmonious and may we be open to each other's insights. We are grateful for this time together and trust that you will lead us towards, towards success and clarity. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up this evening is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or just deletions this evening?
Your Honor, in the interest of getting the applicant out of here without having to listen to our financial audit, could we move ordinances up to one dot two? I'll make the motion.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to one point two, which was formerly number eight from the CED Director Ordinance two-two-zero-one, the rezoning of PRZ and two-four dash zero-one, thirty-two, two-seventy-five Stevenson Highway, M-one-two, MUI-one, first reading.
The applicant, Ahmad Nassar, doing business as Detroit Seventy-Five Kitchen, requests to rezone one parcel of land located at three-two-two-seven-five Stevenson Highway from M-one light industrial district, district to MUI-one, mixed-use industrial one district. The subject parcel is approximately one acre in size and is improved with a three thousand three hundred square foot commercial building currently operating as a restaurant and bar and an associated parking lot. The property is located on the west side of Stevenson Highway, just north of Whitcomb Avenue. Staff recommends that the city council adopt ordinance two-two-zero-one upon first reading and schedule the required public hearing and second reading for December the ninth, twenty-twenty-four city council meeting. And the applicant is here. If you have any questions or if you want to say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. I am Ahmad Nassar, and with my brother, we are the owners of Detroit Seventy-Five Kitchen. We're a family business that's been operating in Detroit for the last ten years. During this time, we've been grateful to be recognized as a top one hundred restaurant in America, as well as a top-three food truck in America, and that's something that we're, that we're really grateful for and we're proud of it. We really love the work that we do. Just one year ago, we opened our first temporary location outside of the city limits, outside of city Detroit. Some of you may have driven past it on Fourteen Mile and John R. At the former Sears Auto Center, we took over that vacant space and turned it into a Detroit Seventy-Five. The intention there was for it to just be a one-year pop-up. At the conclusion of that, it turned out that, yes, indeed, it was, it was a successful test. And we hope to make the property and subject our first-ever brick-and-mortar. And we would like the consideration from this council to rezone the property. I'm happy to take any questions, and we're also very excited for the opportunity.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask for a motion from council, and then we'll see if there's any questions for you. All right, so can I get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance twenty-two oh-one on first reading, scheduling the second and final reading for the meeting of December ninth.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or any questions for the applicant? All right, did you have a question? No, okay. So seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no, motion carries. We will see you back December ninth. Thank you. All right, next up, we have a presentation. It is from our city auditor, and if you want to do an introduction or?
Yep. I'll introduce Daniel Clark. He's a principal at Reeman, our new auditors. We did an RFP for Audit Services this past year and made the switch, so this is the first year. So do you want to introduce yourself further than that?
Thank you, Melissa. So good evening. My name is Daniel Clark. Thank you, mayor and council. As was just stated, this is our first year doing our financial audit, so very pleased to work with the city this year. We do have our presentation tonight. You should have been also provided a copy of the draft financial statement. It was also a board communication letter, but this presentation I'm going to present tonight will cover both documents, but happy to answer any information directly out of there. So before we get started into the financial slides, I did want to introduce Dan Merritt was the senior manager this year that participated in this year's audit, as well as supervisor Shelby Bailey, so they worked hand-in-hand with Linda and Melissa and the team. So we appreciate all the work that went into not only an audit, but often first-year audits can, can port a lot of extra work since we're new to you and you're new to us, so we, we do appreciate the cooperation that was provided. First and foremost, I did want to communicate that, as listed in the audit draft opinion, we are going to be issuing an unmodified opinion on your June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four financial statement. So that's exactly what you'd be looking for, the highest level of an opinion that an auditor can give in, of an organization such as yourself. Obviously, once that's approved tonight or thereafter, then these will be finalized and then they will be issued up to Treasury by the December thirty-first deadline. So obviously plenty of time until that deadline, so again, appreciate the hard work that, that allowed this to get done well before that deadline. We are asked also to communicate new accounting pronouncements this year. There was one new, the GAZM, your Government Accounting Standards Board, number one hundred, related to accounting changes. So those, those standards were implemented and are applicable in your financial statements this year. With that, we will move directly to the financial statement slides. So if you're following along on slide two, so these first two slides are going to show the trends over the last five years of general fund revenue. So there are six major categories in which the general fund brings in money for the city. First and foremost is property taxes. So you'll see in twenty-twenty-four, on slide three, that the city had twenty-four point four million in property taxes, or a one-point-eight million dollar increase, or eight percent. So a nice uptick. You'll also see over the last five years, that has increased steadily back from two thousand twenty. You were eighteen point seven, you're currently at twenty-four point two. So obviously, as, as property values increase and folks that sell their homes in the area, it, um, increase, that's what, what drives that, as well as any changes in mileage. You also had intergovernmental of seven point three million. You had charges for services of one point four million. And then on the next slide, slide three, you have licenses and permits. So in twenty-twenty-four, you had one point three million in license and permits. Your fines and forfeitures stayed pretty much the same as last year, at one point two million. And then lastly, the, the general fund recognized about a million dollars in investment returns this year. So obviously, the market has seen a lot of positive increases, interest rates have risen. So as a result, the city's general fund dollars are now earning on that interest, and you saw a significant increase in investment earnings of one, of, of one million for twenty-twenty-four. All right, we will move straight to expenditures. So the city also has about seven different major buckets related to general fund expenditures. First, you'll see that the general government had about four point three million in expenditures related to twenty-twenty-four. Next, public safety, which is your single most largest expenditure in the general fund, far exceeds all others, is for public safety. And the city expended just about twenty million dollars exactly in, in public safety. The next category is an other category, although it includes judicial roads, refuse, and library. I know in previous years, financial statements have presented it more condensed. This year, oh, yeah, it was broken out, so I just wanted to show what that was this year. There was six point two million dollars in other expenditures. And then the next slide, the final slide for general fund expenditures, you had cultural and recreation of one point three, community development of one point three as well, debt service of one point two, and then capital outlay, which represents all the infrastructure spending, vehicles, buildings, land purchases, et cetera, streets. The city spent about four point nine million dollars in expenditures this year. Now we will move on to the general fund, fund balance on slide six. So if you go all the way over to the right, in twenty-twenty-four, this is a picture of all revenues and expenses. So, so again, all the way over to the right, the city had forty-one point six million dollars in general fund revenue, compared to thirty-nine point four in expenditures. So you had a, a positive revenue or net income of just about two million dollars in general fund. So your fund balance went to fifteen point eight seven nine, again, an increase over last year of thirteen point seven. And we measure that in comparison to a year's worth of general fund expenditures. So you'll see right next to the twenty-twenty-four, you're currently sitting at about forty percent fund balance. So last year, you were at twenty-five percent. I know there were significant expenditures last year. So again, when we were comparing the fund balance last year to those, I know that the city had significant expenditures in capital outlay, which is what kind of drove your, your fund balance down a little bit, but now you're much more closely aligned to twenty-twenty-two. And again, you're sitting at a forty percent fund balance, well above the GFOA recommended number. So typically, they recommend between two and three months, or like twenty-five percent. So you guys are currently sitting at forty, so a very healthy fund balance number. Now I will say that a lot of that general fund is being carried forward for future twenty-twenty-five capital expenditures and expenses. So again, that carry forward is related to capital projects and then the resulting budget amendment that's related to those. Onto the next slide, we'll talk just briefly now on water sewer. So the city does have one enterpriser business-type fund related to water sewer, and that's on slide seven here. So if you go all the way over to the right again, in twenty-twenty-four, operating revenue for water and sewer jumped up from eleven point four million last year to fifteen point three, or fifteen point four million in operating revenue. Your expenses remain relatively the same, around eleven point five million. So currently, you're sitting at an unrestricted balance of just over five million dollars, or four point three million in cash, which represents about forty-four percent of a year's worth of expenditures. However, I do know that the increase in the water and sewer revenue was specifically there as a result of, to pay for future water main projects. So although your revenue did increase about three point nine million, thirty-four percent, again, that was strategic to pay for future projects in the water fund. And then lastly, your pension and your OPEB. So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. So obviously, the city has retiree healthcare, et cetera, that they, they have a plan for. So this slide shows the four different plans that the city has. So you have a employee retirement system, a police and fire retirement system, and then you have an associated employee OPEB and a police and fire OPEB. So starting all the way over to the left, the ERS, or the Employee Retirement Pension System, you had a total liability of forty-nine, or I'm sorry, forty-five point five in liability. You had associated plan assets of thirty-eight point four, with a net liability of seven point one or seven point two million. So you're currently funded at a very healthy percent of eighty-four percent. So again, good results there as a result of, of, of investment results during the current year. Then moving to the right, you have a police and fire pension, total liability of ninety point two million, or just under ninety point two million. You have associated plant assets of fifty-five point three million, with a net liability of thirty-four point eight. So this plan is currently sitting at sixty-one percent. So, so not quite as high as the eighty-four percent for the ERS, but again, pension and fire is currently sitting at sixty-one percent funded. And then we move to your ERS OPEB and your police and fire OPEB. So both of these actually are a net asset, so your, your assets in both plans exceed the liability. So this is something that's not very usual in the state of Michigan and, and nationwide. So again, a very, a very good results here that you have assets that exceed the liability. So for ERS, you had a net OPEB asset of five point five million, or that represents about a hundred and forty-four percent funded. And then your police and fire had twenty-three point six million in liability, with twenty-six point eight in liability. So you were about a hundred and fourteen percent funded with that one, so a net asset of three point one. So very positive results in both of those plans. The city has strategically funded those to get those over that hundred percent funding status. And then, before I get to any questions that you might have, there are a couple of board communications that we like to communicate as part of this process, which are in your board communication letter. We do assess accounting estimates, so those things that include depreciation expense, allowance on any uncollectible accounts, inputs that go into calculating those pension and OPEB numbers, and we assess those and deem those all to be reasonable. Happy to state that we encounter no difficulties while performing the audit, so not only were all the questions answered and all the, all the documentations provided, but again, the city did a really nice job. I, I really appreciate Linda and recognize her for her hard work, and then Melissa as well for just providing a really good environment to perform this audit, which speaks to, again, why this is done well before the deadline. We do issue two different reports, I'm sorry, one different report related to internal controls over financial reporting, and there was one finding noted to some, some audit adjustments. Again, typically, when you bring in new auditors, there can be a different perspective, a different look. So there were a couple of adjustments that were proposed as part of the audit process. And then there were two management letter recommendations that were noted. And if you go to the SAS communication letter, page. I'm sorry, there's one. On page eighty-one, which is on this page here, there was one recommendation that was noted. Again, these are best practices. We noted that anytime a, an organization receives and spends federal money, that they should have written uniform grant guidance policies. It's not that the policies weren't being, or that those standards were not being followed, it's just that they were not written, which is very typical for organizations that may not constantly be spending and receiving federal money. I know that the city is already putting these policies into place, so again, it was one thing that we noted as far as for best practices looking forward. But other than that, overall fantastic audit, especially during a year of transition. So we, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions as a result of those, those slides.
All right, thank you. I am going to open it up to council if you have any questions.
Your Honor.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Dave.
Mr. Soltes.
So. I'll make sure it's working. So for the one person that's paying attention out there, can you talk about page three? Where the, in twenty-twenty-two, it was, it took a dive in the investment income?
And then investment return, sure. So for GAAP purposes, we have to mark assets or investments to mark-to-market. So as part of that process, obviously, there's an adjustment to fair market value, which isn't necessarily on a catch basis. So in that year, that the investment return did drop to a negative as part of the GAAP for, for financial statement purposes only.
Okay. And then for.
It's not that the city didn't receive interest income, it was that mark-to-market of investments.
Gotcha, okay. And then page five, can you explain why there was a thirteen point three outlay?
From last year?
Yeah, in twenty-twenty-three, yeah.
Thirteen point three last year. I know there were significant capital expenditures, and I don't have the list. I am, I apologize on why that was, but I know that there were significant capital investments last year.
That's actually the civic, I'll jump in, save. It's actually the Civic Center project, which was budgeted at fourteen point two million. And although it came in under budget, we used the savings to do things like build out the police and, the police department women's locker room. So we actually had around fourteen point two million dollars in capital. So that's actually spread over two fiscal years.
Your Honor, yeah, no, I, I realized that. I just wanted whoever, if someone's paying attention, why, you know.
Why that was, yes, yes. Yeah, and that was last year's audit, and then, yeah, as was just, it was over a two-year period, but most of it hit in twenty-twenty-three, yeah.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you had something?
Yeah, you, I kind of alluded to my question already. I was going to ask you, how did we, how did we do? Were we, were you, are you looking forward to coming back next year, or, yeah? How do we compare to some of the other cities that you've worked with?
No, so I mean, again, as I stated, first-year audits can sometimes bring more questions, but I mean, for a first-year audit, we felt like it went extremely well. The staff was very cooperative, and obviously didn't know what we're doing here. Not have findings and such speaks to that, so. And then also, I mean, I know a lot of cities go right up to the deadline of December thirty-first, and trying to get this issued during Christmas can be an absolute nightmare, because there's also state reports and stuff that also we appreciate. So we appreciate that this is well before that, and cannot have a crazy December, so.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
Your Honor.
Yes.
So if I'm looking at this correctly on, on slide two, our increase in property taxes, it looks like year-over-year is the most we've seen since twenty-twenty. But we've had significant drop-offs from intergovernmental, which I am assuming is predominantly state revenue sharing and federal grant money. And then we dropped fifty percent in, in services, which, all of that cannot possibly be pet licensing, right? But could, could you maybe talk about, is that a potential problem for us in the future? Because we're not replacing that revenue with the increase in property taxes, and it's not one-to-one. And so is that going to bite us in the rear, or is this kind of an anomaly that you're looking at?
So I would say part of this is, so again, it's our first year, and I know that there may have been some, some groupings that we grouped things that maybe your prior auditor didn't for that, for financial statement perspective. But typically, charges for services somewhat pay for themselves. So I mean, I would say that I'm not too concerned with that, especially it being such a small percentage of your overall fund revenue, your general fund revenue. So specifically speaking to why that dropped about eight hundred thousand, I do not know. I can get that information for you based on the actual figures, though.
Well, yeah, it, it's just that that, that's down fifty percent, and then we lost about thirty percent in the intergovernmental. And so again, it could be like a one-off thing.
Yeah, and that is.
But I'm, I'm just, I'm just curious if there's an issue.
I think that's almost all related to federal, so, and I think ARPA specifically. So I would say a lot of that is a one-time expenditure. So I would say that that drop from ten point three to seven point three is, is specifically related to federal, which, which again, is a one-for-one. So if you get the federal money, it's for a specific expenditure. It's typically not for ongoing expenditures that the city would be responsible for.
Okay, so, and maybe this is for our staff. So we are, as we're going forward in strategic planning and budgeting, we are planning that it's going to be more in that seven-three number again. It will not be back up to the ten. And we're also planning that our services charges are going to be in that one point four, one point five range, instead of the two-one to two-five that they've been in years past, correct?
I would have to look to see exactly what's grouped into charges for services, but for sure, intergovernmental. but for sure, intergovernmental going forward is only forecasted to decline because grants are forecasted to not be as readily available, especially from the federal government over the next span of years.
Okay. If we could get the report back of what's included in the charges for services and just email that to myself and council, that'd be great.
I can certainly do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your Honor, on page eight, in regard to pensions and OPEB funding. You had made a comment, you made it very quickly, in regard to police and fire and police and fire pension and the police and fire OPEB. Did you say that that was rare to find it, municipalities to have their numbers?
Did OPEB have a positive funding? Yeah. Yeah, I, so I mean, a lot of OPEB plans are either not funded at all, they're a hit as you go, or they're very unfunded, just because it's not something that's been strategically planned.
Did you just say in the state or in the country?
Well, specifically, I was talking about the state, but that goes throughout the country as well. I mean, I would say, I mean, it would be rare that OPEBs would be, would be in a net asset position.
Awesome. And I just wanted to take that opportunity to salute Linda and Melissa and our staff, and just doing a fantastic job, so thought I would take that opportunity to highlight them and their work.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Your Honor, I do have a question about page seven, the water and sewer, the operating revenues versus expenses. I know we said it, they were, you know, basically saving for capital improvements, but I'd like to address that, the jump in revenue. I know because we had some changes in our fees this year, so I just would like to maybe address that. What is, perhaps you don't know, but do you have any more information about that, or maybe one of our staff can answer?
Yeah, I mean, from what we understand and what we were looking at, is it, yeah, it's future significant capital expenditures related to the water sewer, so.
Was it, were these operating revenues all based on, like, fee, our fees for water operating revenues, like those?
So I'll have to look up exactly what the fifteen million is, because we did not increase water rates thirty five percent. So how we went from eleven million to fifteen million. There are other things included in there other than, and I imagine a big part of it also is investment income, I thought. But I will, I'll look that up and give you the details.
I just feel like we'll get questions on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you go to page twenty five in the statements, I mean, it does include charges for services, it includes property taxes, and then there's another category as well, which makes up that fifteen point three million.
All right, any other questions from any other council members?
Your Honor, are we receiving and filing this tonight? Could, I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion to receive and file, but with the addendum information that we've requested included?
That's fine. Is there support for that motion?
Your Honor, support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All right, seeing that all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those that say no, thank you. So we are going to receive and file this, you know, and we'll be looking for the rest of the information. Thank you for all the work you did with this, and thank you, Ms. Kineff, for the work that you and your staff have done. Very much appreciate everything you've done. I am going to open the meeting to the public now, so this is the opportunity, if anyone in the public wishes to speak, ask that you give your name, address, and affiliation with the city at the podium. If anyone wishes to speak. All right, seeing none, I am going to close meeting, open the public, and we are going to move to the consent agenda. If I can get a motion to approve the consent agenda, there's two items on there, Director of Public Services, Scheduled Replacement of Vehicle Number Four Six Nine, and the council meetings from November eleventh, if I can get a motion to approve.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, if I could just have staff clarify, since the one person who might be paying attention would want to know the van that's being replaced, it doesn't look like it's been in the shop. We're taking advantage of the fact that we have one in stock that we're able to buy, correct? That's why we're accelerating that despite it not being in the shop?
Yes.
Okay.
Vehicles are very hard to come by that match our fleet requirements, so when they come available, we buy them.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those that say no, motion carries. And then we have reports from the city manager, the road improvement project agreement with McNaughton McKay on Pinehurst Drive.
So the city of Madison Heights has worked out an agreement with McNaughton McKay to oversee road improvements on Pinehurst Drive specifically to facilitate semi-truck parking. This project is essential for improving access to East Lincoln Avenue to allow for access for other businesses. McNaughton McKay will be reimbursing the city for the construction costs following the same method that we've used for past special assessments. Staff and I recommend approval of this agreement between Madison Heights and McNaughton McKay and authorizing the city manager and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor? I move that council approves the agreement between City of Madison Heights and McNaughton McKay, and we authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those that say no, motion carries. And then we have the awards purchases, we have from the finance director, workstation replacement for the city manager and the finance departments.
Fiscal year 2025 budget includes funding for the replacement of furniture in the finance and the city manager's front office. The workstations in these two city hall departments are not cohesive sets and in fair to poor condition at over twenty five years old, and are the remaining Civic Center project workstations to be replaced. Farmington Hills Cooperative bid pricing was extended to Madison Heights for the purchase at Smart Business Source. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve the purchase of replacement workstations from Smart Business Source in the amount of fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty three dollars.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor, I move that council approves the purchase of replacement workstations from Smart Business Source in the amount of fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty eight cents.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I'm just going to say, office systems are so expensive. I have had to bid them out and price them out, and, you know, a single desk, when you have to buy it in these like cubicle forms, they just get crazy expensive. So this pricing is actually a very good pricing, so congratulations on finding such good pricing, that's all I'm going to say.
All right, any other comments?
Your Honor, just really quick, I want to put a spotlight on the fact that every other department, every other workstation in the city was already replaced, but these holdouts in the finance and the city manager's department really shows the frugality of our city manager and our finance department of waiting until it's basically falling apart to replace them when everybody else got new ones. So I want to send a shout out and some appreciation their way for holding on as long as they could.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, and Mr. Bliss, did you want those for the historical committee, the old ones? No?
No, somebody can take a picture of it.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those that say no, motion carries. And then finally, Skynet, the IT contractor, citywide copy machine replacement, the lease contract.
The city's IT contractor, Skynet, has conducted a thorough review and analysis of the city's copier inventory, including the monthly cost, and helping staff identify the correct number of machines necessary to efficiently conduct business. Currently, we have sixty four copy machines with nine different manufacturers in city hall, the library, and the police department, most of which are at the end of their practical lifecycle. At the average age of equipment of over seven years old, with seventy percent being over ten years old. The cost for toner for this equipment in fiscal year 2024 was over six thousand six hundred dollars. The cost for leasing the current equipment, maintenance, and copies in fiscal 2024 was twenty eight thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars for a total cost of thirty four thousand nine twenty seven, or an average monthly cost of two thousand nine hundred and eleven dollars. We received quotes from both RICO and Xerox, with Xerox's quote being the most comprehensive and the lowest overall cost. This Xerox proposal replaces twenty one of the existing copiers at a monthly cost of two thousand four hundred dollars for sixty months. This solution will also allow the city to reduce the number of copy machines and manufacturers, having a shared print allowance of twenty eight thousand nine hundred and eighty three copies between devices. Includes the maintenance agreement that covers the cost of toner, drums, and waste for containers of these devices, and provide for the removal and recycling of the machines to be replaced. Therefore, Skynet and staff recommend that city approve a sixty-month lease with Xerox Business Solutions Midwest in the amount of two thousand four hundred and nine dollars for twenty one copy machines and maintenance, and allow the city manager to sign on behalf of the city. And that should be two thousand four hundred and nine dollars monthly.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the sixty-month lease agreement with Xerox Business Solutions Midwest for two thousand four hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents a month over the course of that sixty-month lease for copy machines and maintenance. And I would also like to include my motion to allow the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those that say no, motion carries. And with that, I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for giving Santa the key to our city, so he can come visit on Christmas Eve, for all those who still believe in Santa. I happen to be one of those. Great job on the audit to Linda, kudos to Linda and her team and city manager Marsh for bringing on a new auditing firm. I go through audits at work all the time, every year, and we just finished ours actually as well. They are not a lot of fun, so good job. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone that's coming up this week. If you're traveling and, and spending time with your family, that's fantastic. Hopefully you can get some quality time, and please be careful traveling. It is the busiest traveling holiday of the year, so be safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. I also want to thank our staff and the audit team. I love hearing good and positive information on these things. The difference from a decade ago to today is pretty tangible, and that's through the hard work and leadership of our staff, that the retiree fund balance and everything, all of that was a dire problem not too long ago. So it's pretty awesome to see nothing but good news, and the only thing is, we just need more details. So really excited and appreciative about that. I thought the tree lighting was fabulous. Honestly, I showed up thinking it was going to not be well-attended, because it's kind of like freezing rain outside. I'm like, I don't think a lot of people are going to show up. I had to park all the way at the fire station, and I know several folks up here did the same thing. So it was really, really well-attended. The comments I got from residents were, it seemed like there, there's more lights, it was prettier, everybody loved the, the Lanfair band playing, and so really, really appreciative of the growth of this event. When we had to do away with it and then bring it back in the drive-through format over the course of COVID, it was a tough loss for the city, and I feel like it's now just rebounded to the fact where it's larger now than it was pre-COVID. And I think that's a really, really cool thing to say, despite the weather being terrible. So love it. Anytime we can get the community out and get people together, it's the type of thing, like, I feel like table stakes is safe roads and police and fire. Like, that's, that's the job of city council, is like table stakes. We have to make sure that our residents are safe, the roads to the drive-on are safe, that an EMS is able to get there when they need them. But where people see value and love their government and their community is in things like the tree lighting, being able to come out and experience a little bit of fun, free fun for the family, and coming out and enjoying it. And I thought it was a really, really awesome, awesome event. And frankly, it ties into all of the events that we've been seeing historically this year have been up, every event that we do, every community event. And so I think that there's a strong appetite in the community to be able to, to keep getting together. And so I love that our recreation department is expanding many, many more hours for events, and I support the concept of adding a couple more part-time folks to that staff to be able to run more events, because I think it's, it's important. That's the type of value that people want to see when they're sending us thousands of dollars of that tax revenue. We got to take care of the table stake stuff first, but this stuff, this matters. The last thing I want to share tonight, we're going into our strategic planning, and so, you know, talking about how do you show the residents that we're hearing them, that we're giving them value. One thing I want to throw out, and, you know, I'm hoping we'll get the chance to talk about next week, is doing some sort of partnership with a local gym or community center, or even our local school districts. The city manager and I were having a conversation after planning commission with the mayor, and back in the day, we used to have a great agreement worked out with Lanfair to be able to use the page pool, and it was open swim. Every single week, there were multiple times we had the lifeguard on duty, and, you know, families would be able to come out and swim and have a good time. And I think that's the downside of our community. We don't have a community center like some of the neighboring communities around us. And so being able to provide, you know, some sort of a discount, I, I know gyms, even like Lifetime, offer discounted rates for companies and, you know, corporations with lots of users and stuff, so I'm, I'm hopeful that we might be able to find some sort of a third-party agreement, whether it's like the YMCA, or Warren, or Troy's Community Center, or a, you know, private gym, like a Lifetime or something, or even just rebooting the agreements that we, you know, had with the school districts. But some sort of mechanism to be able to allow our residents to have access to an affordable gym membership, or even drop in ability to be able to swim in a pool with our kids over the winter time. So we'd love to see that, looking forward to discussing it. And again, hats off to all of our staff, from DPS to our finance team, this was a big night. I know why they put the exclamation point on the city council live on the sign. Very, very lively discussion, if you're looking at the numbers. That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Happy Tuesday, everyone.
Same, Your Honor.
Happy Thanksgiving to all of our residents and to council and your families. Hope for a safe one.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Marsh?
I just want to say good job to the Active Adult Center and Recreation and DPS for tonight. The Active Adult Center had their first vendor fair, they had some great things there, so that was fantastic, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you. Mrs. Rotman?
Just happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. Councilor Bob?
I just want to say, Linda Kuneth, Sean Ballantyne, Vanessa Verden-Morris, Jennifer Cohen, all those staff members that are overseeing, it's not, they're not doing it themselves, all of it, but they are overseeing these departments and just doing an amazing job. I'm naming you because you're here tonight, and the folks that, that put on the, that put up the, the lights and did all of that work, it is an enormous feat. I drove by this, the city hall several times this week and saw it coming together, and I kept getting more and more excited to be here tonight. So I just want to say thank you, and thank you for your, like, dedication to not just doing a job, but doing a really, really good job at your job. I want to say happy Thanksgiving and happy birthday day. That's all.
Yeah, I also want to say good work by all the city staff, actually for all year so far that's been going on. You guys are doing a great job with everything that's going on with all the programming at the rec department, to, you know, to the finance department, is doing a great job, and the city manager for all the, all the work done to the audits and keeping us really in the, in the positive and not having a deficit at all, which is great. Yeah, and so also, I want to know if the Dr. Bones guys are going to be going around small businesses for the holidays. That's, that's an idea. All right, anyways. For an idea.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Bliss?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. So I too want to say thank you to Ms. Kineff and the finance staff for, you know, we had great results with our audit, so thank you for that, for all the hard work that you've put into that. And yeah, I mean, dust and printers, you don't really think about how much these things cost. And yeah, I mean, desks and printers, you don't really think about how much these things cost. Like, you know, you might have, I'm sure every, most people have, you know, a printer at home. You might have a desk, and you don't really think about when you're trying to manage these expenses on, on a large scale for the city, what it really comes down to. And, you know, every penny counts, and I appreciate that, that we're able to do this and to look at this and to get these really good deals on this as well. I want to do a special shout-out to our emergency responders. They had a very tough weekend, and, you know, they go into work every day, and they have no idea what they're going to be doing. They, they might have a really quiet day, and they're, they're really, they're the one job that you hope that they don't have anything big going on. They want to go home at the end of the day, every day, and said, yeah, nothing really happened today. And sometimes they have to deal with some very difficult situations. So just remember, at the end of the day, they are people just like us, but they're heroes. So they're that little bit a notch above us, because they take time out of spending time with their family and with their loved ones to be there for us, to make sure that we are safe, and to do everything they can to make sure that we are safe. And I want to thank everyone who came out for the tree lighting, all the people who came out and braved the little drops of rain that we were getting towards the end. But, you know, DPS and the Recreation Department, the fire and the police department, the library, the women's club, and everyone else who came out to volunteer to help make it such a success. Our next meeting is going to be December 2nd. It is not a regular council meeting, it is our strategic planning. I invite everyone to come out to see. This is when we talk about our budget, and we talk about what we want to do with the money and how we want to spend it, and what our priorities are, based on the conversations that we have amongst us and that we're going to be having on the 2nd, but also based on conversations that we have with our residents. You know, what is it that people want to see and what is realistic for us to do? So I invite everyone to come out to that. Our next regular council meeting is going to be December 9th. That is also going to be the last meeting of the year. The time is 8:17, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.